And other Jason, Joe, and Ted. Hi guys.
Can't hear you. Wilhelm, I can't hear you.
He's muted.
He is muted.
Here we go.
How about, um, just a few housekeeping items. Again, we are recording this call. Um, it will be posted on the website. Um, try to have only one person talk at once so that way we can uh transcribe her properly. We'll get that all coming over to Superintendent.
Also, if you're not speaking, please mute your microphones. We don't pick up any background noise. So if you're not speaking or don't have anything to say, please mute your mics to avoid any unnecessary backup noise, background noise. Thank you. So I want to make sure everybody's here. Um, I see Harold. Yes?
Yep.
Steve Van is yes?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, and Kristen Nicholson?
Yep, I'm here.
And Sue Robat? Anything from Sue yet?
Yep.
I'm here.
Sue is here. Good. Okay, Sue, you're on the phone. Good. And then I have in live in person, we have Board President Ted Lewis, Vern Fonda, myself, Lori, my district clerk, and Joe DiPaio is here as well. So and Harold is all set too. Okay, so we're all here. Good.
I'm also here virtually.
I'm Kelly. Sorry, Kelly. Yes, Kelly's.
No worries.
Do you have a matrix that we see everyone at the same time? Doesn't work that way. Um, Sue and Kristen, um, we're going to need to see you to vote. So make sure on your, your cameras. Now that you hear, he even.
I'm not gonna have that ability, Ted. I'll drive in because I'm on a call line.
Okay, that's fine. All right, would you like to call them into order? Will you please join me in the pledge of the flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag. Board members that are joining virtually, um, can you hear me okay? I do have a microphone that I could turn on if you need it.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Okay, if you need the microphone on, just let me know. And one other housekeeping item, um, as we take votes, the ones that we see visually, can you please raise your hand, put it close to your face so we can see you, and kind of hold it up longer than normal as um we go through that. If not, we may have to take a voice vote.
And I want to be to a simple roll call vote. Since we can't see Sue and Kristen, we could do a uh, you know, roll call vote. It would be another option too.
I can see Kristen.
Oh, yes. Okay, she's there. Kristen's there. And so.
I'm here.
So the other one, it's uh on a phone.
So we can just do a roll call vote for Sue.
Yep.
And Steve is, yeah, he's there. You just can't see him.
Steve pops up if he speaks.
Yeah, you gotta talk to be noticed.
All right. We need a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting dated March ninth, twenty twenty.
To approve the meeting minutes.
I'll second.
So motion to approve, seconded by Kelly. Any questions or comments? Let's go through and do a roll call. Harold, do you approve the minutes?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
You may be muted.
No, I didn't hear you. Yes, I have.
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
And Sue?
Yes.
And it is unanimous. Next up, we have superintendent's report.
We have two items. Uh, one is quick and one is a bit longer. I wanted to uh notify the board. Uh, last week at the workshop, you asked several questions regarding transportation costs, BLT lottery money, budget surplus, tax levy, questions of reserve status, restricted reserve status, and um a few other items. I just wanted to point out that these items have been answered via an email that was sent. Real quickly though, I'll just uh summarize the answers. Questions had come up regarding transportation. Um, if we don't, if we do not pay transportation for the rest of the year, the savings will be about eighty thousand dollars. Of that ninety percent is ages, so we will be short seventy-two thousand dollars in revenue the following year. BLT lottery money, we are, we are projecting just over one million dollars. Budget surplus, uh between two fifty and six hundred thousand dollars, and that, and that depends on a variety of items, um including the capital projects, the capital project. The, the tax levy is outlined. A one percent increase is forty-four thousand dollars in revenue. Two percent increase is eighty-eight thousand dollars in revenue. Then we have listed the reserve status, and then we have, have listed the restricted reserve status. For the public out there, all this will be posted online by the end of the week. Uh, so we have all, all the reserve status there. One board member asked about the unemployment rate for our area. We are not able to find that, but there's detailed information on the national rate. And one item that came up last week, uh, we are not, my recommendation is that we not fill two positions that will be left vacant this year. One is a clerical position, and one is a teacher aid position. Both of those will be filled internally, uh with backs, uh backfilled with, with existing staff, which is about a hundred thousand dollars in savings and, and um salary and benefits. So that's the budget items. Again, there's no need to take action. Uh, the budget calendar has been adjusted to reflect the new budget vote in June first. I do want to read a statement into the record regarding what's happened the last four weeks. Um, I've never been so proud of our staff and our students as I have been the last four weeks. This whole process began on Saturday, March fourteenth, where I was in my home office all afternoon speaking with colleagues from all over the county and Paul Pettit, Health Commissioner. After hours of phone calls, the tough but necessary decision was made to close school until further notice. Later that night, after my last dinner out in a restaurant, I hastily arranged a conference call with my dedicated and talented leadership team where we started plans that actually began the day before. On Friday, March thirteenth, we began meetings to plan for this long-term possibility. We discussed meal service, technology needs, instructional needs and plans, and transportation. On the first day that we were not open on March sixteenth, we looked at Chromebook, Chromebook distribution, created more hotspots on our campus, meal service details, transportation needs, instructional expectations, special ed servicing, and office hours. I'd like to recognize some of these people that were involved in that process. Michelle Higgins in personal touch for their outstanding work on food service. Joe DiPaio for his work on building the grounds, food service, and working with the Chromebooks. Alyssa Smith for her work on food service, paperwork, instruction, website design, and website redesign. Jason Wilhelm, technology for his work all weekend, the weekend, the first, the first weekend we're not open, I'm looking at, and getting Chromebooks all set to go. Aaron Slapp for his oversight on Google, on Google classrooms and instruction. Lynn Fester and Ridge Road and meal transportation. Sharon Smith and special ed services and oversight of instruction. Laurie Leman, Town and Mayor for outstanding, outstanding clerical support. Dave Ballister, Gary Wakefield, and their team for maintaining the health, the, the health and safety of our school. On Tuesday, March seventeenth, staff um came to school where they very quickly and efficiently developed home learning materials and virtual classroom for our students via Google classrooms. Thank you to our dedicated office staff of Diane Thurman and Chris Verone, who have twice organized learning packet pickups in a very efficient manner for our families. To our teachers for being responsive to the needs of our students, and to the LTA and LEA leadership, uh, and their members for their outstanding support. So many times I have heard, what can I do to help? It's been an honor to lead this talented and dedicated staff. Together, we have served about four hundred, four hundred meals a day, provided instruction, passed out Chromebooks, created hotspots, and flooded social media with texts, phone calls, and more information. I thank all those parents and teachers and my colleagues who have provided me and our district with words of, of support and encouragement. Perhaps never have we worked harder, but perhaps never has it worked been so important to fulfilling our mission and vision of being the heart and soul of, of our community. Over the last month, I received many positive compliments about our school. I just want to show us, I want to show with you some of those right now. When I was on the phone, uh, these are from teachers and staff members. When I was on the phone with a, with a parent today, she did not give enough praise for the food that is available every morning. She says she's very thankful for it, appreciates it, and needs it each day for all of her growing teenagers. In my opinion, this is the most important and valuable accomplishment by this district during this crisis. As I called a few homes, I talked to a parent that told me that they're picking up the free meals each day. She was very grateful for the service. She said at this time, her, her husband's hours had been cut. I wanted to pass on this appreciation I heard from this parent. Thank you for her support and feeding our families. This next one is to our administrative and technology team. I wanted to thank, to take a minute here to, today to express my deep appreciation and admiration for all that you have done. Teachers have received constant support and help during this process, and you have been clear and constant in, in your messaging. Going into the school building at, at various times, even which would have been considered strange hours. Your support has been phenomenal. Many families are proud of the work that this district has done with offering meals, information, and, and education. I have heard over and over again, good job, and wow, the LCS family is really helping out our families. Thank you for all the work you are doing. Thank you to our tech department, who have contacted help with questions from parents. They were able to answer questions within a very reasonable amount of time. And the last one, in the midst of this, in the midst of this disruptive situation we find ourselves hostage to, LCSG has continued to offer breakfasts, breakfast and lunches, has opened up its Wi-Fi access, has kept students and parents adequately informed, is doing what it can to continue the educational process against what it considers odds to be in favor of. You have all demonstrated coordinated, creative, and competent leadership. And while well done may not convey all that much to some people, in my book, there is no higher compliment. I want to thank this Board of Education for your support and encouragement. Your words to me such as nice job, Jason, good job, Jason, propelled me to serve even more and serve, serve even better. Thank you to Dan DeGrue for assembling a moving hello video to our students via virtual digital parade that was um showing this past weekend. We now find ourselves in a tough position dealing with statewide budget issues. And I, I have full trust in my leadership team and this board that will make decisions in the best interest of, of our district and our students while being ever mindful of finances. I can speak for everybody here when I said this will be one of these moments in my life that I will never forget. Remember in nineteen eighty-one, being in my friend's apartment while around regular shot? An eighth grade reading class when a Challenger Explorer in nineteen eighty-six. Watching the towers come down in two thousand and one with eighth graders in Albion. And now walking through the vacant and quiet halls of our beautiful school on March and April days when we should be seeing the smiling faces of students coupled with the wonderful and eager faculty and staff. Instead, we find ourselves safe at home, practicing social distancing and having Zoom meetings. It is indeed a sad time, but we must continue to pull together, work as one unit to, to fulfill our vision, to lead an academic excellence, safety, and community pride. Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Um, I'd like to take a second to thank the superintendent and Joe DiPaio for putting together these budget numbers uh so quickly for us as we try to hit this, this moving target in, in um these times. So thank you very much for your, for your work. I know there's a lot of uh, a lot of background information that goes to that. And to the members online, um, there's someone's notifications that are still audible whenever they, whenever they ding and um so that, that is distracting for the comments that are being made. So if you could mute your notifications, appreciate it. On the business action items, uh, we'll take um letter A alone, and that is the reapproval of the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget calendar. And Jason, would you like to make a couple of comments about that?
I just want to comment, this has been updated to reflect the new budget date of June first, or possibly thereafter. The changes would be on May eleventh. I'm recommending that this board adopt the two thousand twenty-one school budget and property tax report card. Most recommend that in May twenty-first, the public hearing could then take place. This is in time, this is in, in line with the new budget vote of June first or thereafter. So this is the new budget calendar based on the new direction from the state.
Thank you. We need, need a motion to approve, reapprove this two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kristen. Any questions or comments? Okay, we'll poll members. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that's unanimous. And unless I hear an objection, I would like to take business action items B through G together. Any objections to that? All right, let me, I'll read each of them for those online, and then we could get a motion to approve. Item B, authorization approved. Proposition number two, increase the tax to support the Yh's Community Library. Authorization to approve proposition number three, purchase of one sixty-four pound school bus. Item C, authorization to approve the election of one at-large member of the Board of Education for a three-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty, and ending on Ju- June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Item E, approval of the continuation of regular salaries and wages during school closures. Item F, final approval of the eighth grade trip to Albany, New York, May eighth through ninth, two thousand twenty. Item G, approval of the twen- two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one Board of Education meeting calendar as printed. We have a motion to approve items B through G.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Can I just comment on letter F? Um, even though I'm recommending this should be approved, there's a good chance that it will not occur. And should it not occur, I, I will notify the board as soon as possible. Um, but this is for the Albany trip in May. Likely to not occur, but it's best to have it approved now in case we are, we are able to, to go. I don't see it happening, but I'd rather have it approved just to be safe.
Any other, any other questions or comments on items B through G? Okay, I'll poll the members for the vote. Sue?
Uh, yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Steve? Steve, once more?
Steve's in the death zone.
I couldn't get the, the meat off. Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So those are, that's unanimous. And unless I hear objection, I'd like to take um the board policies, approval of board policies. There's four of them. Items H through K as a single group. Any objection to that? Okay, let me read each one. Approval of board policy number fifty-six seventy-six, privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data. Item I, approval of board policy fifty-seven forty-one, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. Item J, approval of board policy sixty-five sixty-two, employment of retired persons. Item K, approval of board policy seventy-five thirty, child abuse and malt treatment. We have a motion to approve item H through K.
I'll make a, approve those items.
And second?
I'll second.
Seven, Sue. Vern, and Sue. Okay, I'll poll members for a vote. Are there, are there any questions or comments? I'm sorry. Hearing none, I'll poll the members for a vote. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That's unanimous. Next, we need a motion to approve budget transfers over ten thousand dollars as printed.
Motion to approve.
And second?
I'll second.
Vern, second. Any questions or comments? Poll the members for the vote of budget transfers over ten thousand dollars. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That's unanimous. The motion to approve item M, private school transportation request as printed?
Motion to approve as printed.
And second?
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, we've had to deny a request for this in the past based on the vaccinations law. Um, is this gonna be in compliance?
We have not officially denied requests based on the vaccination law. We have asked uh that particular family to get us more information. They never got us information, so, so therefore it's neither approved nor denied.
And I would say requests have been denied in the past because they were not inputted by the deadline.
Oh, I misunderstood.
For our record, though, the deadline has been extended, I believe, to April fifteenth for these requests. Uh, but Vern, to your question, we did have an issue with, with, with um several families. Uh, it was neither approved nor declined. They, they never, they never gave this information that we asked for.
Any other questions or comments?
Is our policy that we have to have that documentation to use our services?
Our policy is based on the Health Department. No, we don't have policy. I'm thinking back to those conversations. The Health Department recommended that uh, well, we have students who are not vaccinated, um, that they not ride with the public schools, that they not ride with our students. Um, this particular family, um, mind it. I believe this, this particular family has asked for transportation in the past. Um, I can verify, in fact, they had been vaccinated. Um, but this is not the family that we had, um, that we had discussion on this past fall.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll poll the board for a vote on the transportation request. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. It's unanimous. The motion to accept the donation of a baddie cage from Bradley Hoffy to the Lindo Central School District baseball and softball program.
Motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Poll the board to accept the donation. Sue?
Yes. We thank.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, and that's unanimous. On the business information items, as I go through these, if you have any questions or comments, please let us know, and we will find an answer for you. Treasurers' report, February two thousand twenty. Student activities balance and reconciliation sheet, February two thousand twenty, and the amended version of December two thousand nineteen and January two thousand twenty. General fund schedule claims numbers twenty-one and twenty-two. Federal fund schedule claims number three. School lunch fund schedule claims number one. Capital fund schedule claims numbers four and nine. Trust and agency fund schedule claims number ten and number twenty-three. Scholarship fund schedule claims number three. I have one other piece of information that I'd like to add in business information items. Um, for your comments and your opinions. Uh, we are scheduled to do a OCS vote for our member-at-large for our district, and that is, that needs to be done on April twenty-second. That is, um, normally done in a special meeting, and um I've asked the district clerk to set up a, a virtual meeting to do that. Um, you're certainly welcome to, probably attend in person if you would like. You normally do it in the conference room. Um, but she was asking for a specific time. It's normally done in the morning, and it's, it's literally about a ten-minute meeting, and so virtually may work well, but I would like your opinions.
Early morning.
Uh, how about a time, Sue?
I like seven AM.
Any other comments? Yay or nay on seven AM?
That works. That would work.
Any dissenters? Okay, so we'll schedule that OCS vote for April twenty-second at seven AM, which will be publicly, uh, public notice will go out. Thank you for that. On the personnel certified, Mr. Smith?
There are letters of intent to retire that I recommend that you approve, please. Under letter A.
We need a motion to approve the letters of intent to retire as printed.
Motion to approve is printed.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on the letters to, letters of intent to retire?
Are we going to print these in the paper like we did one time, kind of by mistake? What's that?
I don't know. What'd you just say? Can you say it again?
Yeah, uh, are we going to put these in the paper like we did about three uh years ago or four years ago? And what these are, these are letters of intent, and then people were calling my wife and asking if she was retiring?
Do the names need to be included?
Well, all the uh letters are in executive content. We can check into that and get back to you. But it is a matter of public record. We can check on that and get back to you.
Right, but they, we actually put it in the paper one year in the hub.
I don't.
And my wife had a bunch of people call. This is three, four years ago, and asked her, oh, why are you retiring? And are you retiring? Or good luck on your retirement? So all three of these people will probably, well, Joanne especially, and probably Jeff too, because they're in the, the district, the people around will be asking that question. But whatever.
The hub, the hub may pick it up from the minutes, but we did not send out a notification to the hub. They may have seen it from the minutes.
Alright.
Yeah, I will, I will note, and uh make sure the members note that there, there was a. I will note and make sure the members note that there was a, in a majority of the letters, there was the request not to make their name public. So we'll check on the legality of that regarding the official minutes. But we will make sure we don't release that to the press. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll poll the members on the approval to accept letters of intent to retire. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
I abstain.
Kelly?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I have one addition under personnel certified. The board members do not have this, but it's a minor point. I have a recommendation that you approve James Mates to serve as a student teacher with Mr. Vaughn. James has previously been approved by you as a substitute teacher. He'll be working with Mr. Vaughn this time, this current semester, through electronic work, through online learning with his students. And Mr. Vaughn has excelled in this area. So I recommend that you approve James Mates to serve as student teaching here in the second semester. And again, he's been approved previously as a substitute teacher.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, we will poll the board for the approval of Mates as a student teacher this semester, this coming semester. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Personnel classified, Mr. Smith?
A recommendation that you approve Gary Wakefield to serve as Buildings and Grounds Team Leader in the absence of Dave Bolster, and until Dave's position is filled, recommend that Gary be approved at an increase to his rate of $4 per hour on top of what he normally makes effective March 18th through June 30th, 2020. And by the way, Gary has been doing an outstanding job in Dave's absence. So thank you to Mr. Wakefield and his team.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Has he taken the civil service test, or is this just temporary?
It's temporary, Harold. He's not on the list. We have a list from civil service, and he has not taken the test. And we're still working through that process. As you know, it's complicated. We're working through it. We're waiting to get the second list back this week or so. So, you know, the answer to your question is no.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, whoop, we're going to poll the board. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
With great appreciation, he's an upstanding worker.
Kelly?
I agree with Harold, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
The recommendation that two volunteers be approved, Tara Jackson and Rebecca Lane.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Poll the board for volunteers. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. The motion to approve the recommendations from the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as printed?
Motion to approve as printed.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, we'll poll the board for a vote for approval. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that's unanimous. And we are down to the roundtable. And when are we going the same order that we're voting? Harold? I'm sorry, Sue?
I'm good right now.
Okay, Harold?
I'd just like to say that I don't know who, uh, everybody agrees to, what entity, but I prayed for this to come to an end, and this community is stronger than it's ever been, and that's why Lynnville is the best place in the world to live.
Thank you, Harold. Kelly?
I'd just like to thank all of our, every single person who's made all this happen. I've heard great things from parents, and I'm glad you were able to say it more. Thank you, and thank you to Jason Mohan, who's always putting on. This tech stuff is big. It's been difficult for many. Thank you for helping us out, and so, thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I would like to say thank you for setting up the opportunity to have a meeting like this or something during the time. Say thank you to all the people that are supporting us. And for all of the people that have been helping us with this. And they're, you know, getting feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Kristen?
I'm good. Thank you.
Vern?
I would also like to thank the teachers that have been helping. And I know that there's a lot of people that you can give a lot of thanks to, but this has been a very, a large challenge with four kids at home. So I would specifically like to thank fourth, sixth, first grade, and pre-K for the amount of work that they've done for my children, how much I've learned, how hard and how patient they are, and how much they have helped me during the last few weeks try to be the best teacher I can for my kids. So thank very much to all those teachers.
Thank you very much. We need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Any comments? Poll the board for motion to adjourn. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you all very much for joining. Appreciate it. And we are adjourned.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.